Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and get started. It's Jen here. Thank you all for being here.
You're welcome.
For our information barbecue. Today, we're very fortunate to have Al Key here with us. He has been involved in the green industry for about 24 years. And he's the owner of Deep Root Green Infrastructure. And he's been instrumental in projects like the Martin Luther Kenny Memorial in Washington DC, Celebration just down the road from us, Lincoln Center, Lincoln Promenade in Las Vegas, Yankee Stadium, and Metro Palton Museum of Art. He's written for a number of journals. And together with his partners, he has received one or several patents for their inventions which address trees and stormwater management in urban setting. So we're thrilled that he could be here to share some of his ideas with us about how he might be able to register you in the right spot with the right things. Thank you.
First of all, thank you very much for that. I really appreciate that. I would have maybe said here is Al Key. I'm sure you all took college, okay? Are there any landscape architects here? No landscape architects? Okay.
Is that good or bad?
Pardon me?
Is that a good thing or a bad thing?
Uh, no, I'm a registered CU provider with Florida DBPR. So that would be a, you know, I can give you a CU place, but I'm not certified, I don't know all the different things. So I sent this off to Lisa Silva a week ago saying, hey, what do you think of my presentation? And she said, well, you don't really get into the why at all. So I'm gonna ask you guys, why should you care about the requirements to grow a healthy tree? Would anybody have ideas here?
Safety.
Pardon me?
Safety.
Safety? That's a really good one. Yeah, sort of like the buffer between the travel lane and the pedestrian zone? Absolutely. How about another one? Another benefit, yeah?
So one of the benefits of, that Lisa was talking about, is that trees can take up stormwater.
Yeah, in a number of ways.
Stormwater management is an important thing in Florida. And when we come in transportation, so I know when we wipe the road or do anything that puts down more pavement and results in more impervious surface, it creates stormwater runoff that has to be treated. And that usually involves, you know, lining up some property, making it under a tennant pond or whatever, a tennant pond. And that's very impressive. So I want to hear how this is gonna help.
Okay. Well, trees help in three different ways. One would be a path to transpiration, which you mentioned. The other one is canopy intersecting. For example, a 24-inch caliber lemon plane will hold 3/4 of an inch just in the canopy itself. So if you have an overarching canopy down a streetscape, you're taking a quarter inch before it even sets, before the rain even reaches the ground. And the other thing is, if you're installing all this soil, you should definitely, you can use that to, for water quality as well. Not so much for quantity, but for quality. Any other benefits you guys can think of?
I've had a question.
When the trees are healthy, then, you know, you don't have to replace it. So it's kind of normal.
Right. Absolutely, it is. There are several other ones that I wanted to talk about. Well, one would be crime reduction. Crime reduction is a well-known facet in wooded areas or by the way, street trees. Probably the biggest benefit that your constituents would be interested in would be increased rents or increased property values. That is the real reason why you should be doing this. I can send you off a document. There are lots of research along this line. So if you are developing a strip law, for example, and you don't have trees there, it's gonna be X amount of dollars worth less than the strip law with trees or green infrastructure in general. And this is well-known within the industry. Increased rent seems to me like, to a good developer, and you say, Mr. Developer, you know, like if you put green infrastructure in this program, you're gonna be able to charge X amount more. That will go a long way to the way that they price out their asset and what their rents are gonna be. So, let's see, how about another benefit?
Sorry. And I feel like, kind of along with safety, the thing that I always go to with trees is protecting from heat, stroke, heat exhaustion and stuff. I feel like there needs to be trees on every single road and sidewalk in the state of Florida for that reason.
Yeah, urban heat exhaustion is another big reason to do this. Temperatures, third degree difference between shade and direct sunlight have been, that go to typical differences are about 15. It's incredible, right? I mean, you walk from a parking lot into a park, and you can noticeably feel that difference as you go down. So yeah, urban heat exhaustion is another great benefit. So the critical values is the trees are, can be pretty grumpy when it comes to their success. And here are six different reasons why a tree can die within the landscape, right? You gotta make certain that there's room for the canopy. I mean, you have all these light clearance utilities coming around, slicing out the canopy for their electric lines. The nursery stock problem is also a really bad problem. The nursery stock is just not, well, it's just, you can make a career out of solving that industry. And then also the trunk flare. I think Jose was talking about this earlier. It's that the use of root barriers and that kind of stuff. You have to respect that zone of rapid decay. This is where the tree comes down and there's root flare and you have this area of bushes and roots. So you come in there, you slice off those off, and so you're eliminating the tree's ability to stabilize and feed itself. It's not the greatest, but really, what we're here today is the other two here. We're talking about sufficient soil volumes for the trees to get large and then also getting water in and out of those. And we're gonna show you how to do that using suspended pavement systems and, you know, the success that we've had in other cities. And we're looking to apply that to this area. Any questions? Jose?
I was looking at your website. A lot of your projects have to do with planting right next to the roads and things like that. I would just wonder, how good is it? And it's a limitation threshold of heavy metals, pollution from water runoff from the roads and parking lots. How much can it handle before the effects, I mean, especially the heavy metals?
Yeah. Heavy metal pollution itself is really known, or at least we have several papers on that. And I'm definitely getting into that. But I wanna stick more of a macro focus now before I get down to the dirty aspects of that. But with that, I'm gonna go to the next one. And we're gonna talk about what's missing from the picture, right? And obviously, here, there is a lot of money to get the streetscape right, okay? So there's a piece of art. There's a shaded bustout there. There's a separated sewer. There is an elaborate treatment for the tree. But unfortunately, what's missing is not the tree, it's the soil here, right? So I can get the soils right on this streetscape. This is actually in Long Beach in California. And I can get the soils right here for the price of a light pole, right? Price of a light pole. So imagine, if you will, a live tree in this area and eliminating some of the street furniture here. You might need, like, we like art, but I'm not too sure we need to have art if we're gonna have that majestic canopy of a live oak. Or, you know, conversely, I'm not too sure we have to have a shaded area for people to stand away from the grass because there's an overarching canopy of a beautiful live oak. And the list goes on. If you have a shaded area, there's less maintenance of the pavement. You know, there's a closet, there's good things on this one. So the undervaluing of soils is one of the symptoms of failing of the dimensional development approach as per the American Society of Landscape Architects in 2008. So unfortunately, trees need a lot of soil. And in the shared right-of-way, there's not a lot of space. This is a really cool online program called Street Mix where you can actually push out the right-of-ways and you can have, you know, this side, this amount of space for the bus lane, this kind of space for the car lane, this one, this amount of space for the utility plaza, and play with it and see how it affects your planning. Notice here that there's two feet of space for the tree, right? And that is typical within these kind of things. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to be a player in, or a tree soil should be a player and considered as an asset like all the rest of these other functions of the street in our area. So the soil needs to be, you know, incorporated into the areas of utilities and plinths of this nature. Absolutely essential in order, if you're gonna have a tree this big, to have a big box of soil underneath it somehow. So how much soil do you need to grow a big tree? And my recommendations, or our recommendations, come from the Landscape Architectural Graphic Standards of 2006. This is the textbook that landscape architects use to get their certifications, right? And it was written by my good friend Jim Urban and was edited by my good friend Len Hopper. And what Jim did when he wrote this thing is he cited a bunch of academic research, just the science, right? The biggest graphic on here is something from Bassington Trobridge out of Cornell. And they say, well, how much soil does a tree need? It's out to the drip line and two feet deep. So it's called two times canopy projection. So no matter if it's a small tree, big tree, whatever kind of tree, it is out to the drip line and two feet deep. That's exactly, yeah.
Maybe by drip line.
Okay, where the branches end. That's where the sheeting of the canopy ends. That's where it would be. So if you wanna have a, if the drip line, if a tree is 20 feet across, 10 feet to either side of the trunk, you need to have two feet of that soil present in, underneath that, the branches of the tree. Yep?
So how do you calculate that when you have a young tree that's gonna grow?
You have to plan for maturity, right? The tree sizes are known, right? And on top of that, if you put a little bit of soil, you know, a large tree, a little bit of soil, you're gonna know that eventually it's gonna run out of steam. You know, it's gonna use up that soil and become a mature tree before it gets to be a large one.
So you plan on the maturity of the tree when it's planted young? Is that how?
Correct.
Okay.
Another thing about your specification is that Jim cited a bunch of research from Tom Perry, Philip Crowell out of UNC Chapel Hill in Harvard about shared rooting volumes and that kind of stuff. And we're gonna talk about that later on. But one of the best things he did was is that he took all this academic information and put it into a handy-dandy little chart. So you don't own that there? And we have patently ripped that chart off. So, you know, and this is, again, just basic science. But this is, and this is also a back of an envelope thing. It's a regress mean, or a series of regress means. So the data is all over the place. But basically, if you are a landscape architect and you're looking at this, you would say, oh, I wanna have trees 30 feet on center with an overarching canopy. That would be a 16-inch DBH, that's diameter, breast height. 32 feet, 30 feet on center with an overarching canopy, that's the canopy diameter of 32. And I come down here and it's 1,000 cubic feet of soil. An easily multipliable number. Likewise, if I'm a civil engineer, I come into this and say, well, I've got a 1,000 square foot cash flow area. I wanna capture a 2-inch rain event that comes out to, at 100% impervious, that comes out to 200 gallons, or sorry, 200 cubic feet of water, 1,500 gallons, and a 20% holding capacity. That's, again, the ones, same 1,000 cubic feet of soil, right? So that, so what we're doing today is we're taking this scientific recommendation and putting it, and how do we take this into the city streets? I'd actually like to have one. Any questions?
I think I understand that I might be used. Is it the two-feet standard under, like, under the soil? Or is this calculation you're talking about?
Oh, yeah. We're actually not that concerned about the geometry of the whole system. If you, like, tree roots will be in, there's all, there's a famous harbors by the name of Al Shigo. And Al Shigo said, roots can't think, but they can grow root. And if there's something good for a root to go after, it will. So we're not, so we're not limited to two feet. We're not limited to one foot or whatever it is. If you build an environment for the, or put in soil that a tree is interested in, it'll go there. And so the geometry of this is not, we haven't even started addressing that.
It's more about just given our.
Meaning the volume, yeah, absolutely. Various different cities are going across and they are, and they have these planning documents. I've seen a bunch of them. And literally dozens and dozens of cities across the United States do this. This is in Columbus. There is a downtown streetscape standard. Even though it's not really standard, it's just a feel-good planning document. It says, oh, street trees should have 1,000 cubic feet of soil for street trees and 750 cubic feet if they're connected in some way, right? Well, that's a great idea, but there's, again, no teeth associated with this. So these are documents that are general guidelines for architects and developers to follow. The same thing in Cleveland, too, at Sister City. They, 300 cubic feet for small trees, say, a great group. And then 600 cubic feet for medium trees, or maybe a hunting locust or something like that. And 1,000 cubic feet for large trees. And it was adopted in October 2015. Something like this, I think you would, I would love to see this happen. The best one that I know of in the country is the District DOT 2014 Green Infrastructure Standards. And I can introduce you to Meredith Upchurch, who wrote this thing. And this is probably the best standard there is. And it sort of looks like the other one. The other one's 1,500 cubic feet for large trees, 800 cubic feet for medium trees, 500 cubic feet for small trees. And there's a 25% reduction for shared rooting volumes. The big difference here is that they'll send to the developer, okay, Mr. Developer, you're not providing these kind of volumes for the street trees, we're not gonna send you your C above. This is enacted by the council or the, you know, whatever they give them. However, the district works out there. But it's absolutely mandatory for developers to do that. Otherwise, they can't do it. It's sort of like, you know, other utilities that they're required to put in. Which I think is great. And it applies to all the various tools that we have in place in the district from this thing called suspended pavement, which my product is. And structural cells are part of that, part of that, part of the suspended pavement. And then there's sand-based structural soil, CU soil, daylight soil. And, you know, all of these things have, they also have performance specs. And here in Florida, you have one of these standards as well. This is from the University of Florida, which is requiring volume. And this is where they do have the two-foot depth. For small trees, they have 200 cubic feet. For medium-sized trees, they have 800 cubic feet. And for large trees, they have 900 cubic feet. You'll notice that this is urban design for a wind-resistant urban forest, right? I don't think anybody is thinking about wind resistance when they talk about tree soil, right? It's something I think really important and really topical these days with the second hurricane of going to Puerto Rico as we speak. Anyway, first of all, there are a lot of different ways to do this. And we're talking about ultra-urban spaces, right? For me to get a wind-resistant thing, I've gotta go somehow support that pavement and get a low-y soil, a planting soil beneath that pavement and then filter water through it to listen to that. And here are the various different kinds of things that you can use. You can use a custom cord-and-play system of columns and beams for a tree soil. You can use a structural soil. This is less efficient and less wonderful than, because the soil that they use to hold up the pavement is the same as the soil that they use to grow the trees. So that's an inherent difficulty because there are two opposing goals, one being structure, the other one being court culture. Both, that's the problem with the various different kinds of structural soils, either the sand-based structural soil or the gravel-based structural soil. And then there are several different types of soil cells. I would make the post-in-depth, uh, post-in-depth structure versus the segmented structure much more better for health. And the research is going to, that planting soil is the best, right? So if you look at the research that's out there, whether it's sand-based structural soils here, Loam is outperforming that. Loam is outperforming gravel-based structural soils in not only the, in container, in container studies, but also out in the field. This is a set of data that we came up with for the Rose Kennedy Greenway in Boston, where they have, where we looked at 300, measured 330 trees. And we looked at sand-based structural soil, which would be the worst in terms of the tree performance, but variable, right? And then the second, the second best, if you will, would be the suspended pavement, which I'm selling to you today. And these are, and then the best way to plant trees, believe it or not, would be in open plant area, right? So get rid of all the pavement. Put the trees in its natural setting. And that gives you best plant response in terms of planting, in terms of tree health, right? Get rid of the pavement altogether. But again, we're talking about, you know, this ultra-urban environment where the building face is a proper line and it's concrete over the side of the curb. So, you know, I really think that, you know, using a, oh, how did that happen? Yeah. Using a way to support the pavement, like, SovaCell, this is my product, I was just self-promotion. As a way to support the pavement and put a planting soil beneath that pavement is the way it goes. And these things have been around for a number of different years, for 30-odd years. Now, SovaCell came out in 2007, right? So what this is here is this is a custom cord-and-play system of columns and beams for tree soil. Custom engineered, custom, it's all triad and trade in downtown Charlotte from 1985. Have about 700 cubic feet of soil per tree. These trees look great. There is no health issues. There were some fungus things going on. But generally, they look, they're performing every single aspect that you would expect a tree to. Canopy intercept, the path to transpiration, crime reduction, safety increase, and most importantly, rent increases as well. The shade is high as a walking over a. Likewise, at the 16th Street Mall in Denver, planted in 1982, is a custom system of columns and beams for tree soil. This one, in my mind, has been a little bit less than successful because there's only 300 cubic feet and they're putting lettuceia, or medium-sized trees, 60 feet into these small planting areas. But lo and behold, it's been, the trees are still around, you know, 40 years, 40 years, 40 years and on. So that's good. The granddaddy of the mall is at the Christian Science Center Plaza in Boston, Massachusetts. And this brutalist landscape is now, you know, out of favor. No one would ever plant a monotonic scan of lindens anymore. But I think generally, the tree health is excellent. So the way this works is over a parking garage. It's a custom system of ported-place concrete for all these tree soils. What happens here is that the sheet flow from the plaza area goes over into the tree pits and then populates the planting soil within the, or wets, hydrates the planting soil within this trough where the trees were living. About 700 cubic feet of soil and shared rooting volumes. They look really good for their age. They look fabulous. And these things are all over the place. There's Union Square Park in New York City, Business Improvement District in Methuselah, Maryland, Market Street in Philadelphia, between 6th and 11th. The Alaska Convention Center. All have these older-style things. What my piece of plastic does is it takes the cost of doing this and reduces it down to a quarter, right? So instead of, you know, eh, 20%. But it's about a quarter of the price of doing it this way is the price of using the plastic. So that's the reason why we've been successful with this. Yeah?
Can you go back to the?
Sure.
Have you been doing, like, research on forest cement? And the other thing I noticed on all these examples, the trees, but is there, is the trees that have flowers, like the big trees with the purple flowers or the yellow flowers? Is that a different category than what I used?
Yeah. So generally, a certain, there's a, well, every, every tree, and every city will have a street tree list of approved trees. And using an uncompacted soil line affects all of them, right? None of them are particularly good at compacted soil. So I guess tree roots don't grow in dirt. They grow in the gaps of air between the bits of dirt, right? But we compact everything up to 95%. So there's no biology for the trees to look. So there's not really a type of tree that does well on these things. What this is, is it's increasing the plant pallet that you can use in your downtowns. So, yeah. I'm not, you're talking about a jacaranda or a pawpaw?
I've got a transfer more urban. But I was thinking about, you know, still just trees like, for example, I keep thinking of the picture of the trees that are purple-flowered. You know, they're all purple. And there's other types of trees that I know that I've seen that have flowers, that have a white or whitest type of flowers, things like that. And I'm also thinking about, the other question was forest cement, where with the raw, what if this goes through, the groundwater goes through, so it won't be just, so the groundwater won't just focus in one area and you have one area where it's overflowing?
Yeah. We're gonna show you some pictures of these things with forest paddies on top. But any kind of pavement will work. What I would say is that all, one thing that all street trees have in common is generally, they are low-lying species. So these are species that are very accustomed to having wet feet. They're low-lying species that are meant to be in compacted environments or minimally, minimal, environments with minimal oxygen. And so, you know, like, I'm not too sure about any of the flowers that you're talking about, but I am, but I will tell you that this kind of system will work generally for every kind of street tree that's currently being used by the city. Yeah, and around here, where are they all? Where are all our installations? 54 projects, I think that's an old slide. I think we're up to 54 or something like that now. Primarily down on Lincoln Road. And if you go to our Flickr page, you can actually go find a walk down Lincoln Road and it takes you on a tour of all the different sites around there. So if you ever happen to be parting it up on the Lincoln Road Mall in Miami Beach, then go take a look at some of these sites that we have there and just go to our Flickr station and find out exactly where they are. Around here, we've done Main Street Sarasota, Wall Earth in Lakeland. And then the most recent one is Hyde Park Village, just across the way here. And I'd be happy to introduce you to any of the landscape architects and contractors who have installed those. The signature one that we had in Miami Beach in 2009 was this thing, the extension of the Lincoln Road Mall from Lenox Hall. So what this is, this is a, they're using aquatic gardens with bald cypress. And they're using the Sova cells. Each one of these boxes here is a Sova cell. They're using these to support the, what I would call mud tubs, right? Also these, these drier live oaks over here. So each one of these things is a way of holding up the pavement and then connecting these things into shared rooting volumes. You see that? In this particular project, they spent $400,000 on the trees and $60,000 on the Sova cells. So I'm kinda like, okay, I'd rather have people spend more money on the Sova cells. I'll see, this is what it's supposed to look like, right? And it does look very much like this. But this was the planning, not planning, this is the schematic design that Ray Jones put together, supporting these mud tubs, if you will, for mangrove, bald cypress, and all the while, giving the bald cypress a really good footing of soil beneath it. So that's cool. This is how you build it. This is our product called the Sova Cell 1. This is the project, the product we had back then. The bald cypress is gonna go in here. And you can see the planting soil that we're filling this up with. You notice the difference in color between the site soil and the planting soil? That is the magic sauce. That's the reason why you do all this stuff. That's the reason why you do all this stuff. And there it is shortly after planting, a year or so, and then this is a K-Poc, which is one of the trees there that's performing very well. But again, the silva cells are all through this thing underneath here, supporting up these aquatic gardens. What's really cool about this is that there is a pump house here, which acts as, which raises and lowers the aquatic gardens with mangrove required title, title, what is it? Chain? So every eight hours, there's, the rain guards are different, the mangroves are doing very well, but they're not related to my silva cells, I just think that's cool. But you can see the tree health here is excellent, between the live oaks and that one's bald cypress. And they, these projects are all over the place. You know, we can, I'd be happy to walk you through any of these things, we have pictures of these things on our Flickr page, many of them on our Flickr page, and universally the plant performance is excellent. On major streets, in areas of high compression, and next to bus stops, and, you know, you name it, these things are very good, or parallel success from time to time. And we also have parallel success most of the time. Also, we have, I think, six FDOT projects, so FDOT is, you know, a user, and they have accepted its use on various different projects. The difficulty is that none of them are, have enough cells on to have this wind resistant properties that University of Florida suggested you need. Virtually none of the volumes are that, are of that type of, but the good news is that jurisdictionally, I've bitten off on this sort of stuff, and I'm trying to get ourselves on the approved products, although I haven't done that yet, but it's a need to, has been proposed some time. Any questions about this?
I was gonna ask, why are there so many of the pillars, rather than just review? Is it for the most to wrap around, so like?
Yeah.
Or?
Well, the further I, the further I spread these things apart, it's like any kind of column, pier and column pier thing, the more I spread them out, the more thickness the concrete will have to have, right? So the closer they are together, the less thickness or the stronger it's gonna be. So this is kind of for us, this is the, we designed this for optimal root growth, right? So there are six pillars in each one of these little boxes, this, and they're far enough away for, and large enough away, each, you know, each one is what, eight inches across, so the roots can flow through them. And then all I need is a piece of fabric and a little bit of aggregate, forested aggregate, and then concrete over the top of that, and it's ready for being built. If I really spread those piers out, I've got to add thickness, I've got to add engineering, I have to add depth, and all those things aren't the greatest for tree growth. No question, no one ever asked me that before. Let's see, I have another question. Yeah, sure.
Again, on that one, as it goes out, can you clarify a little bit, like, for example, on the, on the streets, things like that, the stormwater runoff areas, the other, they're part of different, like the roads, but like the sewer system, the stormwater runoff, the cables, the other things?
Yeah, you have another, another stormwater problem about the root removal rates, getting there, getting there. All right, okay. So anyway, this is, we're talking about soil volumes, the volume necessary, kind of stuff. I also wanted to, before I get into stormwater, it's coming, are you, you got a question?
I didn't mean to interrupt you, but before I forget, is there any nuance or thing you have to be mindful of using this concept with palm trees? Poms are sometimes considered as actual trees, or some organisms and so forth, but use them a lot around here, and they have a different kind of structure.
Yeah, monocots are, sorry, palms are monocots and trees are black cops, so it's totally different, right? Root structure is different. The only thing alive is alive on a palm is the base, the bulb, and then the fronds itself, and then there's capillary action, where it'll go up through palm itself and that pressurizes it. So no, strictly speaking, they are not trees. It's more like an onion, or a pepper. But the, so therefore the soil volume requirements are less. And we, there's not a lot of research to what kind of soil volume you can leave for a palm, but, you know, our recommendations are quarter. So if you want a thousand cubic feet of soil per tree, then it's a quarter of that, or two hundred cubic feet of soil per palm. But there's no research really to suggest that we're right, this is just what our friends tell us, right? These are people who are interested in the, and I've seen palms do well in less than half of them. So.
Do you use them in the soil cell?
Yes, yes, people have as well, but those are a fraction of our projects, maybe two or three, twelve hundred, yeah, nationwide. Good question. I wanted to get onto the success of the projects we've had, because we're kind of curious, we wanted to figure out, hey, how are we doing? We have great pictures of these wonderful sites, what are, how do we, how do we codify, how do we publish information about how well we're doing? And the answer is that we actually looked at over four hundred trees nationwide in five different climatic zones as to how the trees were doing. And the basis of all this stuff was, okay, didn't we know the soil, didn't we know the tree type, didn't we know the size of the tree when the damp thing in went in, and do we have a body there to measure the things and say what we did? So those are the projects that we came up with, and those are the projects we measured. So what we did was, we went out and looked at diameter breast height and looked at the growth for every year. If a tree doesn't put on half an inch a year in terms of the diameter, then it's something is going on, there's gonna be an issue of the soil, the water, the nursery stock, whatever. And then the second thing we did was, we, well, first we measured the diameter breast height, and then we went out and we gave a rating. One being excellent, two being good, three being fair, and four being dead. So how did we do? And the answer is, we got it right eighty percent, eighty-two percent of the time, which I think is excellent. So we can't say using this stuff is gonna happen, is gonna be a panacea, right? Maybe one of those other six factors, one of the other six things that happened to us, or one of the six factors to grow a healthy tree, maybe we screwed those up, maybe the landscape architect did work, maybe, you know, we just don't know the reasons why, for that eighteen percent. But what I can tell you is, in this one, there was a double landing, all right? There was a nursery stock issue, and there's an issue with salt up there, you know, a lot of salt getting put up the sidewalks and stuff like that. And this is a chlorotic tree. So the other thing was, is that a lot of these trees were performing underneath the point five inch reference rate, because they do that naturally, like a ginkgo, that kind of stuff, they have a vertice like growing tree, so we are hard on ourselves, hard on ourselves, and I think we didn't want to give us overly positive report card. But even though I think eighty-two percent is really good, so we're hard on ourselves, and I think we're doing a good job, and we get it right eighty-two percent of the time, and maybe more than that. So that's us. And now comes South West's questions about stormwater, right? Hidden rain guard. So how do you, how do you get water ran out of these things, what are the removal rates back there? And this is a traditional method of stormwater management. And this is up in, I'm from New York City, so this is in my hometown, Partigan Basin is a four hundred and four million, fifty million gallon capacity tank that is basically takes up most of, half of Brooklyn and half of Queens before it gets out into Jamaica Bay. And it functions only eighty days a year, and it does a really good job of holding water before it pollutes the bay and gets out into the sewage treatment plants. But this is insanely expensive. And it's eight bucks of a cost per gallon treated. That is, that is really a lot. And there's no conveyance of that. I still gotta pay for the pipes to get it to the system, right? So this is part of the gray infrastructure that works well, that we've decided as a, to put in place. Imagine you guys have projects just like this in Tampa that are absolutely mandatory because there's no other way to get water into the place you need it, and it won't inundate your own systems and drive poor water quality in the bay, things of this nature. The biggest thing that I really want to talk about here is, green infrastructure needs to be at this scale to be effective. So, you know, these one-off projects that I have in Florida, they're great, and things like that, but we really need to think about the scale of green infrastructure, implementing it across, say, the city of Tampa, in order to make it be effective. And they have to, we have to think globally, strategically about this, and it's a long-term commitment to do it. It's just not like a rain guard here and a green roof there, this is something that needs to be mandated across, and that's the reason why I am so excited to talk to you about it today, because, you know, this is the kind of thing that I put together. So, traditional bio-swell, really can't do it. Again, we're talking about this ultra urban environments where there's, it uses a lot of land, and I've got a, a building face with the property line, and it's concrete over the back curb, so I don't have the opportunity to put something like this in with the known quality and the quantity of water that it stores, plenty of room for the trees, you know, that sort of stuff. And then, and then the top of that, you know, this will collect garbage, there's a high maintenance cost, there's all sorts of stuff going on here that would make these unsuitable for our downtowns. So this is sort of a more comprehensive thing, this is by Kevin Perry out of Seattle, actually Portland, and this was the highest honor in two thousand and six that is given from the ASLA. But unfortunately, trees here don't really play a big role. The volume, soil volume in this thing is limited here by these seat walls that go down into the ground three and four feet. Tree's limited here, so can't be intercept, backdoor transpiration, and those rent increases that keep moving here are never gonna happen from the trees here, right? There are a lot of good reasons to install something like this, but trees will never play a significant role. So the idea is to somehow expand those out and give the tree the amount of soil volume it needs to expand that rain guard, so it has much more function and can take the higher stormwater, stormwater events. And to show you, to show you what, what kind of removal rates that you do that are possible with this, is that we actually completed a study with North Carolina State University, this is Bill Hunt's group, in the city of Bloomington, North Carolina. And this sort of proves the hypothesis, this is an ultra urban stormwater BMP, in that the loading on these is really outstanding. Loading refers to, in stormwater hydrology, the, the area of the BMP or the silva cell area versus the catchment area. Usually, these types of areas are ten to one, eight to one, something like that. This one up here, this size of the catchment area is fifteen times the size of that, and this one down here is eighteen times the size of that. So again, this is an ultra urban stormwater BMP. We would never build it this way. What Bill Hunt was trying to do here, and Ryan Winston and Jonathan Page, they were trying to get paired data points in and out for quality and volume. So they put a liner around it, all around the whole thing. So underneath it, along the sides, they wanted to make sure that the data that they had going in was not because, data coming out wasn't influenced by this soil over here, right? Or the infiltration rate of the soil over here, which in this case was sand. So keep that in mind when I show you the numbers. But before I do that, I want to show you a little bit about, the whole idea is, it's an internal, an upstream cash basin, out to a pipe, hits the system really fast, not fast, but it's the top of the system, filters down through the soil media, and then is out to, goes down to downstream cash basin. What's really cool about this system, and the reason why water quality benefits are as they are, was this upturned elbow here. That splits the system into an anaerobic portion and an aerobic portion. So the top one is aerobic, and that's for the trees, and the bottom half is anaerobic for driving the water quality. And obviously, we were looking at very typical pollutants, nitrogen, phosphorus, total suspended solids, and various different kinds of heavy metals, not we were, but Bill and I was running this. So this is a typical hydrograph from the resource site, and this is a great looking hydrograph, it's just very typical for stormwater DMPs. There's, you've got the peak flow attenuation here, it's the amount of reduction of the peak flow, which is great. In other words, your separated sewers aren't gonna be all inundated at the same time, it's gonna, there's gonna be a delay, in this case fifteen minute release, most of the volume is pushed out further, all right? And it's also reduced, right? So if you do the numbers here, this comes up to a twenty-six percent holding capacity. Now, an engineer's gonna say, but I can get a forty percent holding capacity if I use an exfiltration trench. It's like, yeah, but you don't get trees with exfiltration trench. I can fill, you know, there's one of these trenches that has rock in it, has fabric around it, not so gone home about those, because you don't get, you don't get trees. Also, keep in mind that I'm modeling here at twenty percent, right? Remember earlier I said, oh, the twenty percent holding capacity in the soil, that's not the case. This is a twenty-six percent holding capacity, and don't forget we have a liner around this thing. So really, the true holding capacity of these things is gonna be twenty, thirty, uh, twenty-five, thirty, maybe even thirty-five percent holding capacity. But all of our modeling goes to twenty because we're conservative, and that's kind of, you know, it's a good thing, we're trying to be conservative in our stormwater estimates. So, but, so it's not really a quality device, it's much more of a quality device. And these gray bars here are the, what a typical fire retention mince wood, and the colored bars are what this particular study generated, right? So total suspended solids are out of the roof, nitrogen looks really good, phosphorus looks really good, and three kinds of metals, not copper, lead, and zinc, I believe, yeah. Can I ask you a question? Okay. So I wanted to go off into how one city has gone off and planned and done a whole downtown from a planning perspective, and what particular milestones and steps that they have in place in order to put in a number of different projects resulting in Queens Key, which is twenty-four marketplaces, twelve downtown city blocks, and here, this is a typo, it should be two thousand and seven, two thousand and seven. Okay, it's not like a flash of a pen. One of the things they did was, and I'll also show you pictures of this, this is one of the projects, this is called Sugar Beach Chlorochromie Project, and that is this portion right here, just that little bit, that's all it is. Sugar, referring to quality of sand at this urban park, and then also the sugar maple, which are planted there, which is the national sugar maple. First off, they start, they have a soil volume mandate, similar to Washington DC's and the city of Toronto. And I would go off, if you're interested in seeing this sort of stuff, I would go off and see in Google, tree planting solutions and hard gold award services, best practices manual. This was enacted by the city, the silva cells are intended for utility, it's soil for man, soil mandate for the trees, and it's thirty cubic meters for all trees, it's fifteen cubic meters for shared rooting volumes, that translates into twelve hundred and seven fifty, if any of you guys want to do the math. And there's no structural soils involved, because planted soils are so much more efficient. That's one of the first things they did. And then they also wanted to have, they knew they wanted to have trees here, and this was how they wanted to achieve it, they knew they had to achieve this with stormwater and with soil volumes. And so this particular installation, this is five years after installation, and I've got silva cells from one side of this thing over the other side of this thing, and in five years, an overarching canopy. There is no other manufacturer out there that can claim this here, all right? In five years after installation, overarching canopy, first stormwater BMP, if you have one of those, call me, and I want to find out about it, how much did it cost, which had to do it, what was the system, et cetera, et cetera. But anyway, again, completely paved over, and it was silva cells from one side to the next. I have, we have installation shots, we have the documents, the citation, you go to our Flickr page, you can see the installation. Flickr page, you can see the installation shots, how the trees are doing from year to year. But the, one of the things that they needed to do is, they also needed to make sure that Queen's Key was a stormwater installation. So they needed to get a demonstration with data for, to make sure that the stormwater would work in that case. And this is Queen's Key, which is right up the way, another main artery in and out of Toronto, and they wanted to take water from the crest of roadway to over the building faces. And they would put it, this is for four trees, and again, they're getting paired, this is by Ryerson University, so they're getting paired data points for quality, volume, in and out, and it's very similar to the one I showed you before, there's a, you know, the silvocells, and the, the water enters in through a standard catch basin, populates or wets the cells here, it flows down through the, the media, and then exits out to the existing storms who are slower, cooler, cleaner, and less, right? And so this is how I'm building it, the silvocells are gonna go all through this area here, and lo and behold, this is what it looks like when it's built. So that's the intake catch basin, they're taking the water from the crest over here into this area, this distribution pipe populates the bio-retention media with the water, these are cleanout risers, remember those pipes silt in? There's a tree here, there's a tree here, and then the water flows through, and this is going out to the next catch basin, or in this case, combined source. And so, yeah, there's gotta be a series of catch basins that go in and out of this thing, so with known, you know, if you, you make these things go up and down, it's depending on how much water you wanna populate in the system, or how much water you can take out. An engineer's gonna get caught this. Yeah?
You mentioned a lot about the stormwater when it's the rainy season. I guess it depends on the type of tree, but, and the situation, but what about the dry season? Does it start becoming a negative for the city different way, or do they just take care of that, that for a period of time?
Yeah.
For the dry season?
Yeah, you know, that's, that's a really good question, because it comes down to, what kind of soil do I wanna put inside these things, right? A stormwater engineer is gonna want to have, you know, a really free-flowing sand, just for the water, whereas that might, might not work, work very well for a landscape architect or an arborist, because they wanna see plant health, you know? And so therefore, you know, this is a kind of push me pull you problem with this, is because, okay, what soil do I have in there so it can retain the water over a longer period of time, but also adequately drain it? We've got some bright ideas around these, these, this issue, but you're absolutely right, we worry about these things either being inundated or drying out. But I think drying out is a lot more common. I've walked across dozens of stormwater BMPs during rainstorms, and the BMP is the driest place in the city, you know what I mean? Just 'cause the flow-through is so great. So, if you follow our specifications, we are trying to advocate for an increased clay content in the soils, up to twenty percent. And, you know, in the natural environment, the clay soil will drain very well, but they've got, they maintain their structure. So if you maintain the structure of the soil, and while increasing the clay content, getting rid of all screening processes and stuff like that, you can maintain that throughput of water and still hold water in the system. Can I answer your question?
Yes, and afterwards, because I'm not, I'll cover, I'll, I'll, something else to follow up to on that, but I'm not going to.
Okay, all right. So there's a couple years after installation, and I'm sorry, I know my dates have changed up here, but this is 2014. One, a ginkgo here, slow growing tree, and one here, a sugar maple, or maybe a red maple, certainly a maple. And there are the differences, remember what I said, there were two slow growing trees on our, on our report card that we did for ourselves? That is a prime example as to, you know, what is the difference, planning the exact same time, just difference in things. So what's Queen, Queen's Key doing now? They were trying to, they were designing for a four and a half inch rain event there, first phases of it are all completed now, literally ten thousand of the frames there, multi-block streetscape with catch basins in and out of the whole thing. Go, if you ever go to Toronto, walk up and down knowing that you are gonna see, you know, healthy trees in a couple of years. This was taken in 2016, two years after planting, the trees are just beginning to come out of transplant shock, but the silvocells are connecting these trees on both sides of this rapid transit. And the reason why I am showing you this is because, you know, this particular project, Water Street, was in the news recently?
Oh, yeah.
And it would be a shame not to apply a soil volume mandate for this project, and make the developers put it in there. I wanna make certain that that happens, and make it with teeth, so make it so, okay, Mr. developer, you're not gonna be able to build this building with your fancy architect without providing for the trees. It's not good design if the trees die, right? So please, have a soil volume mandate, and if you have that, soil volume mandate, filter water for the basis stuff. And with that, I'd like to thank you very much, and see if there are any questions.